I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Just a note, exit signs over to your right and behind you as you came in the door. Tonight, our first order of business is the continuation of a public hearing of local law number seven of 2022, moratorium on land development approvals. I need a motion to continue.
Carl will make the motion.
Berenger will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Conner, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So, Carrie, thank you. All right, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, come up to the mic and give us your name and for the clerks. Oh, yeah, this is for the public hearing on the moratorium. Would you like to?
I'd like to make this donation to the village of Monroe for fireworks for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anthony, that's very thoughtful. Thank you, Anthony. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Okay, so, public hearing, local law seven. Anyone from the public wish to speak on that matter?
I see the violation.
I'm sorry, sir, just one second. This is a public hearing on the moratorium. There will be an opportunity for that.
Oh, this later?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Folks, I have some letters ready. Can I pass them around or?
Sure.
Send them to the clerk.
I'm here on behalf of our client, 208 Business Center LLC. I'm from Whitman, Osmond, and Hannah. My name is Matt Laponis. My colleague, Rob Stat, was here at last month's meeting. I just wanted to provide public comment on the proposed moratorium. First of all, as you guys know, our client, they own, they have an interest in property located at 401 and 403 State Street and 208 and 23 Gilbert Street here in the village. At the last meeting, I think you guys had asked for support for the assertion that the largest portion of the village's vacant land is owned by the Orthodox Jewish community. So, this letter provides some support for that. There's a list of properties in there and related owners that control a majority of developable land in the village that would be adversely affected by the moratorium. Just for the purpose of public comment, just wanted to provide that the board should be cognizant of the fact that this moratorium would have a disproportionate impact on that insular community. And that's something you should be cognizant of and something you should take into consideration before enacting the moratorium. And that's just something we wanted to get on the public record before you guys decide to act on it.
I'm sorry, who do you represent?
208 Business Street, sorry, 208 Business Center LLC. That's right. And that's it for me, unless you guys have questions. Thank you.
I need a motion at this time. If no one's coming up to speak on this matter, if we can adjourn.
Hello, you all know who I am. I'm Tim Metz. And like a lot of these lawyers are represented tonight, we own a major part of Monroe, too. We've got about 50 acres spread out between Monroe and the surrounding area. I think this moratorium is needed. I think it needs to happen. We have a property we just purchased that needs to be developed out, too, but there are issues that need to be resolved. I think the village people are obviously on your side. What, we have about 9,600 people in the community here, roughly, in the village of Monroe, and almost 1,000 voted in March to put you three in office. So, obviously, they believe in everything you're doing. And I think the moratorium is needed. You have a problem with fire department. You have a problem with your water system. You have a problem with your police force here. Not enough people to do everything. And Monroe, as I have restored a lot of the properties, people are aware of this in this community. As I've restored them, I take into account a lot of the stuff. Rest Haven was not torn down. It was built up from what it was. Village of Monroe should be Central Park of New York City, here. Let them do what they want to do in the town of Monroe. That makes sense. But I think as a major landowner, and, you know, we've got a lot of rentals here in this area. I think you really should do this moratorium. Don't worry about lawsuits. You've got 1,000 people that voted for you and put you in office. You've got a bunch of lawyers sitting here. Where are their clients? You know, I deal with lawyers all the time. And I believe in what needs to be done, and I believe this board will do the right thing. And if they believe that you don't have the resources, they've got to think twice, because I think you do. I think we have, I've heard, affordable housing issues are a problem here. What do these land developments do? You've got the 39 units or so that was approved by Smith-Cole Park. You've got 72 units that were approved over by Mansion, Monroe Country Club. How much more built out? If I recall, I think about 95% of the village is built out. Why does it need to be built out? You have a historical district here. Where is that in your law? I mean, it is in the law some things, but, I mean, the village itself. Where I sit, I'm outside the village. I've got the historical district on my own in that building. But you've got to implement this stuff. You know, Monroe was not done on the history of Monroe. It has not been meant to be big, huge buildings. It's always been developed out appropriately. And it needs to continue that way. You know, a lot of businesses are coming to the area, but I think you've got to remember, you've got 1,000 voters behind you, because they would not have put you in office. And they've got to realize you've got the resources. But even if somebody wants to sue you over it, reality is, then sue them back and say, where's the affordable housing, all your plans? You have some federal mandates, I believe, that require some that have not been met. Where is this? Think of all that that needs to be done, and your responsibility. We know this, I believe, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Orange County Sewer District is going on a moratorium. It's very soon. So, that was my understanding. If they are, you need to, how can you build if they're on restrictions? If you don't have the water, how are you going to build? What if a fire breaks out and a water line goes down? That was a big problem you had a couple of years ago when Purcell was in office. One line went down, they turned up the emergency line, but in all those years that it was down, they never fixed a second line in case the first, the new line went down. What resources do you have? Lawyers can say what they want. I'm the taxpayer. We pay almost $100,000 a year in taxes to this community. We know, between town of Monroe and village of Monroe, we know what goes on. You're spending my dollars. But I do agree with a moratorium for a short term. There were things that were done in the last comprehensive that I think could be better. And I think you're entitled to it legally, ethically, and as a voter, you're responsible to me to make sure that you fix those things and correct them as needed. And these gentlemen can come in, and I think they should come in, I think they're obligated to come in, and say, these are ways we think we can help save the community. But you've got to keep the thought that you've got the people behind you. And that's no shortcoming of that. But those resources are almost maxed out, if not maxed out, in this community. So, you need to say, hey, listen, you want to build more? That's fine. But your water capacity should be only 75% of what you have, just in case something goes down. Now, we're doing the same thing back on Pine Crest where we just bought. Orange and Rockland is coming in and redoing the system before we establish all the bungalows there. Why? Things happen. What if a wire breaks? And a lot of the original wiring in that house, on that property, goes through the trees. Doesn't come up the road. You've got to think about the responsibility you have to the taxpayer. Not what to the lawyers or their clients. I've had lawyers, I just fired a lawyer recently, went in front of the judge, I changed the lawyer, and the judge says, why have you not prosecuted this case? He says, because I figured it'd die on the vine. Judge looks at him, go, what do you mean? I just figured it'd go away, so he wouldn't have to prosecute anymore. Why? Money. You know, I had another one. I put a bid on a property here in Monroe. My bid went up to $12 million to buy the land. The law firm, and I know this for a fact, went to the seller and said, don't sell to him, sell to this person for $3 million less. All because a lawyer said, do this or don't do that. Now, some lawyers do things for the right reasons. Some don't. Your problem is, you're in the position, you have to make that judgment call, not us. But the taxpayers have elected you, all of yous, on the board. And I've dealt with many of yous for many, many years. I'm a straight shooter. I won't lie to you. And when I say I'm going to put my money where my mouth is, I put my money where my mouth is. We have over $4 million invested. We've got, when we're done with this project, we'll have nearly 40 rentals between Monroe, the village, and the town. We pay a lot of taxes to this community. And if you need to take six months or 12 months to figure out for the development of this community, I think you're going to find every taxpayer, on my favorite communication, Facebook, behind you guys. So, I suggest that you pass this. Don't worry about the lawsuits. If they want to come after you with lawsuits, then I think you need to turn around and say, show me the affordable housing you're going to do. Show me this, show me that. And if they're worried about capacity, tell them to pay for the increase in capacity, so you can cover yourself and the taxpayers. People, as much as people want to see this community grow, they also do want to see it stay. That's one of the reasons why High Street looks so good the way it is. It's one of the reasons why, when you drive around Ron Lake and you see what's going on, you go, or you go to Walton Lake. A lot of people outside in Walton Lake now, a lot more than I seen when I first got here 20 years ago. You've got to consider all this. Don't worry about the lawsuits. Don't worry about, you do what you're supposed to do, and I guarantee you 100%, this community will be behind you. You've got the 1,000 votes plus. So, I appreciate it. I wish you guys good luck and keep up the fight. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public on this matter? On the moratorium? Please.
My suggestion is about the moratorium, to get a blanket, to stop building, it would be, anyone who wants to build have to get the permit regardless. And we were able to ask him to get the resources. And usually with more people, there's more fire department, more people, there's more police department, more people, there's more taxes. Anything, what you get better, bigger, you get better, and you have more. So, if anything, to get a blanket coverage, to stop building, I don't see it to be a good idea, rather than to ask the builders to provide and make sure that they're covered. Thank you.
Okay. So, I need a motion to adjourn the. On the matter of the moratorium?
Shear? Hi. Okay, yeah, I recommend everybody go to the village site and look up the comprehensive plan that you already have. It was fascinating reading, and I just wanted to pick out a few things that I could share with you, because I think that it's, everything you need to know is right here. And I do support a moratorium. But I just wanted to let you know that, I thought this was just so fascinating. The master plan for the village of Monroe cannot be expected to anticipate every need of all the years to come. This is the 1960 master plan report for the village of Monroe. A final plan for eternity would be a dead hand on the hopes for progress. It is most important that the master plan and zoning structure be reexamined at frequent intervals. They are purposefully and flexible and can readily be adjusted to keep pace with the times. Now, this is really interesting. This is the first unified and comprehensive look at the land use and settlement patterns. 1960 master plan recognized that an ineffective plan would require frequent and timely reexamination. Unfortunately, the 1960 plan did not establish recommendations and protocols to help ensure the periodic reexamination and update. In preparing the plan, the comprehensive plan, it is discovered that an original 1960 plan was literally locked away in a vault in the village clerk's office. Its pages crisp and uncreased, its corners still sharp. 52 years later, the village of Monroe and the world have clearly undergone significant changes, unforeseen by even most visionary and informed people. Unlike the 1960 land use plan, the zoning local law has been reactively amended from time to time to respond to development pressures. This allows the village to grow, but not toward a unified vision based on citizen input. And then, here we go, here, something more. The village board, in undertaking this update, that we did, the comprehensive plan agrees with the 1960 village board insofar as the comprehensive plan must be a living document that is intended to be reexamined, updated, reconsidered, improved, and adjusted according to the needs of the time. However, the reexamination must be proactive and comprehensive and reactive and not piecemeal. The village board, therefore, has included a timeframe and recommendations to ensure that this plan does not go 52 years before its next update. All agencies should conduct their affairs with an awareness that they have an obligation to protect the environment for the use and the enjoyment of generations to come. Now, as far as my personal views, I see nothing really wrong with taking a timeout, six months, to take a timeout, to reevaluate how we've been doing things. We have so many things to consider. We have the fire department overwhelmed. We have the local ambulance that can be overwhelmed. We have water, and we have sewage. All these things have to be taken into account when we have growth. Growth is good, but growth can be too much. As of right now, I live on North Main, and our traffic is kind of loony. So, I'm just saying, like, overall, it's a wonderful idea to put a little moratorium down till you figure out and square away all your Ps and Qs. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'd like to make a motion, have somebody make a motion to adjourn the public hearing on local law seven at this time to the next meeting.
Berenger will make the motion?
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Conner, aye.
Dwyer, aye. So, Carrie, thank you.
It's going to be a continuance?
Yeah. Okay, first order of business, I'd like to do a roll call. Trustee Berenger?
Berenger's present.
Trustee Ferraro?
Ferraro, present.
Trustee Carl?
Carl, present.
And Trustee O'Conner?
O'Conner, present.
And Dwyer here. Okay. Our first item for the evening is a presentation by USA Program Utility Audits. Gentlemen, are you here?
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. My name's Tom Augustini from U Audit Associates. My partner, John Bernardo. We're actually part of the NICOM USA program, where we take a look at and examine and do an analysis of utility bills, franchise agreements, really, all sorts of services that we can provide. We do it on a contingent basis. So, if we find the village is due a refund, we take a percentage of the refund. You keep the majority of the refund, and then going forward, you either get a reduction in your bills, or in the case of a franchise agreement, you get increased revenue. So, about a month ago, I had met trustee Ferraro at a NICOM event, their annual meeting. He attended the class seminar that we provided. So, in kind of doing a little bit of research on the village and going through your budget and through your cable franchise agreement, just preliminarily, we think it's a good idea for the village to move forward, so we can do an audit of your cable franchise agreement, hopefully get a refund. You're a little bit limited in the language in your agreement. Later on, your agreement comes to expiration in October of 2013. That's another service that we could perform for a fee, where we actually negotiate with Cablevision on your behalf to get you better terms and conditions and ultimately increase your revenue. Our goal is always to get you more than what we receive. And so, that's really the main reason we're here tonight, is to kind of present some of those ideas to you. You select the audits that you would like to be performed. It's an à la carte basis. And then, it's a letter of authorization from the village to the respective utility carriers or to Cablevision, where you have your franchise agreement, and then we get to work doing, performing the audit. So, initially, we can do the audit of your cable franchise agreement, your grocery receipts tax. So, you should be getting revenue according to the different utilities that are obligated to pay you the 1% grocery receipts tax. So, we'll take a look at all of those utility companies, whether it's gas, electric, telephone, ESCO companies. We'll take a look at all that. And again, hopefully, on that side of it, increase your revenue. But also, take a look at, on your expense side, to try to see if you're owed a refund and decrease your expenses going forward.
Have a question?
Yes.
Have you mentioned that we can choose what we want to audit, like an à la carte?
Correct.
Why wouldn't we want everything? Wouldn't it be a benefit to have you look at everything?
So, there's two sides to the program. One side of it is contingent based. There's a fee for service on the other side of the, on the other side of the menu. But we encourage you to take a look at that to see if there are some of those services that you think are worthwhile, that can maybe limit your exposure.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of them won't apply to every municipality. The franchise agreements, the grocery receipts tax audits, those are pretty universal for every city and village across the state.
You also, it's also the second party utility companies besides the cable franchise?
Correct. Yeah.
Because we do have that.
Right. So, your utility provider here, so for example. Orange and Rockland?
Who do we buy it from? Oh, I don't know the name of the firm. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Oh, gotcha.
We work through a third party, M&amp;R Energy.
That's who your supplier is. Yeah.
Delivery is by Orange and Rockland.
Yeah. We don't advise on, you know, the supply side, what you're buying to, you know, for your buildings. So, the ESCO companies, we're only looking at, on the ESCO side of it, the suppliers, the ones that are supposed to be paying you the 1% grocery receipts tax, to make sure that they're including everything in their calculation. And there's potentially ones that just aren't paying you, because they're not, they're not up to speed or not familiar with the law that says they're supposed to be paying you the 1%.
These utilities are governed by the PSC, yes?
Correct.
So, if they weren't giving us or doing what they were supposed to be doing, what implication is that for them?
To start paying you?
Well, forget about to start. I think that'd be a good idea, fortuitous. I'm talking about if they haven't. I mean, it's a public utility. I mean, could you imagine that they don't?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you have any familiarity with Orange and Rockland Utilities?
A little bit, yeah. Yeah. That's, that's not the, that's really, they should know it. They've been around forever. I'm sure they're very sophisticated and would know that the grocery receipts tax exists. It's really the ESCO companies, the suppliers, that could be across the, could be across the country that don't have headquarters here, that just haven't done the research in New York State to know that they should be, should be paying you. Could be telephone providers, too. You know, Verizon is a predominant player in New York State. There's other minor party players in the telecom industry as well, that just could not know that, that they're supposed to or obligated to pay the 1%. So, the ones that are paying you, that, the ones that are paying you currently, if they're underpaying you, not calculating it correctly, you can go back three years to do an audit. If we find someone that has never paid you, there is no statute of limitations. So, they would have to go all the way back to when they started providing the service.
Insofar as the gross receipt tax, or whatever, you know, we call it, we have, let's say, for instance, on the Cablevision side, and I don't know if this is just a fee that we will reimburse for, but we have a, we have a, an income, a stream that comes in through our current contract.
Right.
And I imagine that's based on the overall sales of something.
Correct.
And I think we collect 5% of something.
You do. Yeah.
And so, what you would do in that case is you would take our cable bills, and then you would assess what it says that we are receiving, and if, in fact, that dollar is correct.
Yeah, so we'll do two things. When we do the audit on your revenues from Cablevision, we're getting, it's as simple as you providing us a letter that we can take to Cablevision that says, give us all the information as to how you came up with these payments that you're making to the village. So, they have all different sorts of categories in which they're supposed to be charging the 5% that the services that residents in the village are receiving. So, we do a reconciliation of what they're paying you versus what they should have paid you according to your cable franchise agreement. Now, if you, if you fast forward to 2023, your 10-year agreement expires. You have language in there that's not favorable to the village.
That's 2023 contracts up.
Correct. Yeah. So, that would be the second part of it. The first part is to see if they're doing anything inaccurately. The second phase of it during the negotiations is to correct those items in which you're not maximizing your revenue.
I didn't, I was at the conference as well. I'm sorry I missed you.
Oh, yes.
But what was the, where are you based at? What is your?
Out of Binghamton.
Out of Binghamton.
Yeah.
And do you have downstate clients at all?
All over the state, yeah. So, we, right, we have services that we can perform for private sector companies, mostly in the cyber audit world. It applies to municipalities, too. But for the, for the most part, we service the conference of mayors and their membership. So, that's kind of how we were built and kind of how we operate, is to come up with services, whether they're, whether they're services for fees or whether there's services where the refund or the enhanced revenue can pay for it. And they're all built around, for the most part, 95% of it, they're built around municipalities, cities and villages, mostly.
How would you generate a proposal? How would that work?
So, for instance, on the cable franchise agreement, it's as simple as, if we get you a refund, we get 40% of the refund. And then, you get, mechanically, the way it works is, you get the entire refund, and then you remit 40% of that refund to us.
Is that negotiable?
That is not negotiable. That's the NICOM rate. It's traditionally 50-50. But because NICOM has endorsed us and uses us for this program that's under their leadership, that's where the 60-40 in your favor was determined.
So, the audits that you would perform would be based upon franchises that were granted and/or are part of the village of Monroe?
Correct.
So, Orange and Rockland Utilities, Frontier, we have a Cablevision contract here.
Correct.
You spoke about. And I'm not quite sure with Frontier, I think there's actually a couple of different things there. Now, we also have a fiber optic company that does business here.
Okay.
But we don't have an agreement with them, other than them being here.
If they're, if they're not, for the most part, if they're not using your right of way, they don't need to compensate you. If they're using your right of way and they're not compensating you, that's because you have decided you don't want the compensation. If they're using your right of way and they're not compensating you, that's because you have decided you don't want the compensation from them.
I decided, you said?
Somebody has decided at the village that, you know, for instance, like you said, you have a, in your cable franchise agreement where it says the fee is 5%, you, you could put a fee in there that says 0%. You don't, you could say they don't need to compensate you for your right of way. That's really the whole basis of why utilities are paying either the GRT, the grocery receipts tax, or the franchise fee is because it's a municipal right of way that they're using to access their customers. So, you know, to me, grocery receipts tax is a, is a misnomer. It's, it's not a tax. It's really rental because they're renting your right of way in order to gain access to customers.
So reviewing the contract would reveal whether or not we had?
Correct. So you want to take a look at the, we have your actual cable, cable franchise agreement. Now we want all the detail as to how they're calculating what they're, what they're paying you.
Are they not being audited already internally and slash externally to see if they're compliant with what they're supposed to be doing?
No.
Oh, they're not?
No. No. So it takes really somebody to, to call them out or highlight or point out their deficiencies and, and how they're, how they're doing it.
Even internally, they're not checking themselves?
No. No. So typically, if there's a problem with, with yours, there's a probably, a high probability that there's a problem with a lot of municipalities in the area. Without going into too much detail, only because it's, you know, you're going to be negotiating it whenever, whenever you start that negotiation for 2023. They've, they have successfully placed language in your agreement that puts a, puts a real cap on what they can, or what they're obligated to pay you. They've put language in there that, that is not in your favor, that depresses or suppresses the amount of revenue that you're, that you're getting. And, you know, there's, there's a reason behind it.
Okay. So just to kind of sum up, a review of all our utilities here in the village where right of ways are involved or agreements are required to be there, that would be performed.
Correct.
If any types of savings are realized, there's a 60/40 split for that.
Correct.
If there's no issues.
If there's no issues, you have peace of mind that what you're getting paid or what you're paying is accurate.
So our contract with you refers to that?
Yes. Yes. Now, fast forward to 2013. I'm 20, 2023, the contract that was approved in 2013. That would, that would be a fee for service, but we would be able to highlight you, your, where you're kind of deficient or where the areas of the cable franchise agreement could be improved. And, and so our goal is to increase those, to increase your language, to get you additional revenue that would essentially, less than one year of increased revenue would pay our fee so that you would enjoy the next nine years of increased revenue.
But that's a separate?
That's, that's separate. Yes.
And just curious, what is the, what's your success ratio in finding problems like this?
Uh, in the nineties, nineties, in the nineties. Yeah. Yep.
Anybody else?
Street lighting. We just, we just did an extensive audit on street lighting.
Yeah, we, we're converting into an LED program.
Yep. Very popular. So you, you own your streetlights or you?
Going to be.
You're going to be purchasing them from, yeah.
And we're upgrading to an LED versus a high pressure sodium or whatever's out there.
Right. So there's still some of those old mercury vapor, high pressure sodium. So when you put the LEDs in, so it's, so somebody must, somebody did do a street, I mean, we can do streetlight audits too. But before you do the conversion, it's always do, good to do the audit first because then if you do the analysis before the streetlight audit, you, you're not going to get a good analysis.
That's what we've done.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You betcha.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, regarding the local law seven, we're going to have a continuance of that.
Be tabled.
Right. So that'll be tabled.
And I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to, the reason, and the only reason that those board is tabling the moratorium local laws because they just heard from their planning board today with some comments. So they will need time to consider those comments.
Okay, thank you. I do need to approve the minutes, meeting minutes of May 17th. I need a motion to accept them as submitted by the clerk.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
O'Connor will second.
Question? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
So carried. Next order of business is the Independence Day fireworks, updated contract for Legion fireworks. Trustee Carl, you want to read it?
Yep. Resolve the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign the updated contract with Legion Fireworks Company, 10 Legion Lane, Wappingers Falls, New York, 12590, for furnishing and conducting a firework display on Friday, July 1st, 2022, rain day of Saturday, July 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $20,000. The board voted, I'm sorry, the board would like to take this opportunity, this opportunity to thank all the generous sponsors that helped make the community event so successful. Thank you to Lorran Farms for the most generous donation, which was in the amount of $5,000, along with the town of Monroe, the Village of Harriman, and Orange and Rockland Utilities. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second, please.
Berenger will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
And just to FYI, I am working with a possible other sponsor also. If that comes to fruition, it's one of the, one of the big box stores, then we'll, the next meeting will.
For like, for a donation also?
For the fireworks, yes. For an additional 5,000, looking for.
Okay. Next order of business, event application for a wedding ceremony in Crane Park Peninsula, Pan Gazebo. The board has had a chance to look at it?
My, I guess, did they have insurance on this? Is there insurance, insurance going to be needed for this?
Well, it's contingent upon them filing a certificate. So even if we vote okay, it's not until they give us its insurance.
Alright, there's extra long application that we, that we have, which we talked about. Everything is contingent on the certificate of liability insurance. Now that should be to us within how many days of the event, which is supposed to be held on Sunday, July 10th.
If the policy's in force for a period, it should be, you know, if they handed it in tomorrow, as long as it covers the period of time for the event, I'm good. Counsel, yes?
Alright, I'll make a motion that we authorize this event application.
Approve it?
For Yolanda, Sakara, to host a wedding on Sunday, July the 10th, 11:30 AM at Crane Park Peninsula, Pan Gazebo in Crane Park with approximately 16 people.
Can you give a second?
Roy, aye.
Any additional comments? Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Roy, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Next order of business is a refund request in 57 James Road from the Building Department fees. Resolve the Board of Trustees, trustee Carl.
Hold on, I'm just trying to breathe. Alright. I guess I'll make the, make the motion and then we'll go into discussion.
Yeah.
Resolve the Board of Trustees denies a request of Karen and Brian McDermott, prior property owners of 57 James Road, Monroe, New York, to refund building department fees in the amount of $2,625.62 regarding the conversion of a screened-in porch to an enclosed room without proper permits. The building permits requested to be refunded are listed. A new plan's $2,000, new electrical inspection, $135, permit fee, $206.34, fine for no permit, $284.28, for a total of $2,625.62. I'll put that in the form of a motion. If we have a second, then we can discuss it.
Berenger will second. Question?
Yeah, I, I'm reading the, the building inspector's comments and I believe it's page eight, page eight of.
The email she sent?
Of 19. Says the building department absolutely stands behind the CO issued in 2004, listing the structure as a screened porch. All protocols were followed and there were no misconstruing any words in the CO. The CO clearly matches the application the McDermott submitted, as well as the plans McDermott's, as well as the plans the McDermott submitted. That's twice, you know. There is no dispute that the McDermott's follow procedures. They did, however, choose to modify the structure after the CO was issued and they did not, and they did this modification without permits. So, I mean, we have to stand with our building department on this. And that, that would be my reason for denying it.
Any comments?
I'm trying to keep track between the letter because we just, and what was sent by our building department.
Just, yeah, again, all I have is what's here from the building department. She seems pretty accurate. Lace it out. But you know, it could have been in the original building inspector just assumed it was okay, but didn't put it down. That's all I could think of.
Well, the thing that, you know, I met with them and I spoke with them and advised them if they felt that strongly about it, they should put a, as far as the new plans go, I'm not going to reimburse them for plans that, that needed to be done. The work was done by.
Right.
I think the, the challenge here is when I spoke with them is the size of the room is correct and it's true and the plan's supported. If you look at the one picture.
Would they party? Yes.
Yeah. So the only difference between that room and the room that's there today is those screens are out and hard glass is in.
Which, which makes it a year-round room.
Well, I think the one piece of it that makes it year-round is the heat and there's no heat.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, while I, while I read this and it says that they did apply for permit and Jay did issue a CO vote for the addition and a screened-in porch. And they admit that the screens came out and the windows went in. They do, they do say that. They told me that. I think one of the challenges I have is, is the three times penalty. It's something that they clearly. It's like, it's like, here's what I look at. So you have a window in a house and it's inefficient. So you put a new window that's efficient. Or you do something to enhance the envelope, the heat envelope of your, of your space that makes it whatever. In this case, it was a screen versus a window. I don't think that negates the work and the, and the building permits and the, all the effort that was put in here. This, this particular fellow, in this particular case, because I did look at it as a very individual case. I mean, I know the gentleman, but I think more importantly, he's a 608 carpenter in the city, a very skilled guy and so forth and so on. So, you know, when they say that they have X, Y, and Z, I, I, I take it to, to belief. I think sometimes we get caught up in this three times penalty because clearly what she says here, it says, I also enclosed a copy of the current as-built plans by the McDermott's, which they did file. I told them, get the plans done, get them filed, do what the man tells you to do and move forward. And it says two sheer staircases, one off the exit of the side of the house and then beyond the side of it, and then there's one behind it. The 2021, the 2002 plan, I guess, from what I understand, do not show a screened-in porch with the two sets of stairs.
Well, I, I have, I'd really be interested to see my house now. My house has a back room that I really can't use. It has screens and windows, but they're not double pane. So you freeze in the winter and you sweat in the summer. And if I'm lucky, I can use it at the holidays when my oven is, is on. And I, I know that when I had the building inspector in our house for, you know, I don't remember why he was there, whatever he was looking at, I said, can you just check on this? And he goes, yeah, everything's good. Like you, you're doing this correctly or whatever. But it's not a room I can use, which to me sounds like the same thing as this room.
Yeah, there's no heat in this room.
There's, it's, it winds up just collecting stuff.
What's the recommendation?
Well, my, my feeling is that there shouldn't be a three times penalty. The plans had to have been done to reflect what actually is in the house. The building inspector would be correct in saying, if you want me to put my stamp on it as a building inspector in the Village of Monroe, I have to know what my liability or exposure is. So he went out and checked the plans that were as-built drawn and confirmed, yes, this meets egress, it meets code electrically and so forth. So the plans were necessary. But, you know, the three times penalty, I think is a bit aggressive.
So then this, you looking to take the 28428 off, is that?
Yeah.
I would, I would certainly modify my motion to include that.
So we're still charging them the 2,000, the 135 and the 2?
We're not charging. That's money they already spent.
Well, I don't mean, I don't mean charging. I'm sorry. We're not reimbursing.
We're not giving them credit.
Right, right, right.
Exactly. We'll reimburse for the.
So we're just removing the 284.
284.
Oh, here it is. Sorry. Yeah, the electrical has to be done. The permit fee would have been the permit fee. It's 28428.
So they're asking for the new plans, but we're, we're ignoring that.
Alright. And to be frank with you, typically when someone comes in for that relief, their cost to do the plans is never questioned. What they're, what they question is, hey, I finished my basement and my cost basis was $8,000 and if it's a three times penalty, the billing fee, which is $400, is $1,200. And that's what they come for the relief.
Okay.
This is, I've never seen this before. He's trying to say, listen, I should not have needed this given the plans I submitted back in 2002. I should not have needed to get additional plans. But there's electrical, there were windows placed in there. There was some modifications. And the building department, we have to, as trustee Carl says, we have to protect our building inspector, which ultimately protects our village from that kind of exposure.
Alright. I, I agree. So then let's correct this price.
Well, we, we deny everything but the, the fine for no permit that they, we reimburse them for that, the 28428.
So the new fee would be 234134. 2,34134 is denied. And we would, counsel, just correct me if I'm wrong. And then the credit issued back to the resident or former resident would be for the amount of $284.28.
Fine.
Yes. So the motion should read, we deny the, the total due, but do credit in 28428 regarding triple time fee.
Do you want it to like a be it further resolved or, you know?
Yeah.
I think still we need another motion to accept. How many still need another motion to accept the waiving of the three times penalty?
Well, do we just change the amount and, and reflect in the notes, what we did?
Yeah, you reflect in the resolution that, just what you said, that you're waiving, or that you, you're waiving the two hundred eighty-four, twenty-eight.
Right.
The rest is.
Head west for Milpa.
Okay.
I was trying to say.
All right, so, trustee Carl, you would then re- read that and just say to refund the, so, resolve the board of trustees approves, or denies, excuse me, denies the request of blah, 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 uh, and the amount totaling two-six, two-five, six-two. What we're denying actually is two-three, four-one. So if you just insert that.
Which reflects a waiver of the two eighty-four.
Right.
Yeah, we're denying, it's two thousand three hundred forty-one, thirty-four, correct?
Correct.
That is being denied and we will refund, um.
And further resolve that.
Further resolve that we, um, refund the fine for no permit in the amount of two hundred eighty-four dollars, twenty-eight cents.
Okay, uh, that's a motion, can I get a second?
For our second.
Call the question?
Erin, draw a.
For our eyes.
Car life. All right.
Do I rise, okay, thank you. Okay, um. Next order of business is the property maintenance hearing for seventy-one High Street, uh, incident number two thousand twenty-two dash zero-zero-six-nine. Please. Good evening.
Thank you for listening. I got my tenant over there and we spoke, uh, like, eight, nine months ago, he had to take care of the property because he lives there, I guess he don't want me to be in his nose. And he's one, just like a half-site, at one side of the house was taken care of, which I'm, I wa- I saw while, while I was there. And he got someone to cut the grass and the guy did not do the whole, everything. So what happened is, he got like stuck with one half and, uh, when he called him, he like told him his machine broke and then he, he was like pulling around with the time and letting his, letting his like just not doing it. And when I called him, when I got the letter, he told me, "Okay, I will buy this Friday, I should have time, he's a work, hard-working paramedic and he must, must be able to get some time to do it." So he told me, "We'll do it on Friday." And what happened is, the land is very steep, so his machine wasn't able to get down there, so he ordered another one from Wal- Walmart. He told me, "He's gay, he's getting it by tomorrow." One pe- one piece is coming Friday and tomorrow he gets the, the cutter, so it was like, until we have a chance to do anything, because he got someone and the guy just fooled him around and I wasn't there as well to, to see that it's getting high. I guess it doesn't get overnight high, but it was like, it takes time until I get a look on it and that was the three days holiday, Saturday and two days' holidays, which wa- which took my week, which was a week ago, make it very little time to act.
So was this grass cut or not?
Um, she went out today and the side yard was not, in the, you'll see in, in the last page of your.
Is that the last page?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Attached to the photo from today for your hearing tonight, the grass on the driveway slash Bridge Street side has been cut, the grass on the High Street side yard has not.
It's very steep, very steep, so it's very difficult to get, he, he ordered a new machine because he figured out he's unable to do it with, with his old machine, so he ordered already a new one. He already, he told me that he should have it, should get it by tomorrow.
And if they don't get it by tomorrow? We move forward to cut the lawn then?
So, so here's where we're at, I think, and you c- help, your letter, can I see your letter, please? Thank you. I don't have my thing. So, um, the date of this is five twenty-six, which was, uh.
Yes, I received it by Monday night.
Yeah, I got it. So, uh, Mr. Fogel, this, uh, property will be finished cut tomorrow?
Hopefully, he told me he gets it tomorrow.
Here's, he, let, let me just explain the challenge where we are, so I think you can appreciate this. Uh, this is your home, your property, it's what you take pride in, right?
Yes.
And, and for us, it's the same thing, and we want to see everybody have that opportunity, so if you take pride and take care of your property, but the guy next door chooses not to, it reflects poorly on your property, right, and then on the village and so forth and so on. So, um, I, I think that, you know, the attempt was made, it's obvious that he made the attempt, um, but I think, at the end of the day, what's important is that you're the record owner, not the tenant, so we can't, you know, attach anything to the tenant, we can attach it to you as the property owner. So, what we need to do is resolve this, that this gentleman, who's telling you, the landlord, he's going to take care of this, that he does. And if he doesn't, then, then we're going to go in and mow it, and if we go in and mow it, it's a different conversation, um.
Yeah, the point, what I'm saying is that he prom- promised me that we'll do it on Friday, so I.
Turning Friday?
No, last Friday.
Last Friday, yeah.
So it was from Mon- Tuesday, from Monday night, when I called him, until it told me Friday. So, when it's turning Friday, I believe to hope that he does it, but then Friday, until now, I only have half a day available, because, and I went to see it, after this afternoon, I was shocked, oh, it didn't, he didn't do it. So I called him, until I got to him, told me that he gotten, he's mowed, wasn't able to cut it, so need to order a new one. It was like, he got something and he wasn't able to finish it, because it's a challenge that he didn't never face. It's a steep down, steep, it's not like just.
Sure, just not a flat lawn, yeah.
So it's very difficult, he ordered something, so the question is if, I just need to get the time to see if, if, if he, uh, takes another day and two, if I can, if, the question is what I, what I can do in the meantime, like, it's another day, so hope, if it doesn't, would more, maybe give it like, until the next Friday? And then, like this, I, Friday's too long?
No, today's Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Today's Tuesday.
Tuesday. No, because, yeah, I, if, if he doesn't do it tomorrow, I, I need to get another day for me to see, oh, it didn't do.
But the, the, the problem is that the longer you wait, the grass doesn't stop growing, it keeps growing, so it's only going to get worse, the next mower he's got is not going to be big enough to cut the grass, because the grass is grow, it's going to continue to grow, so you really need to take care of it.
So either.
You know, unless you have a landscaper yourself that you could bring in there, I, you know, but you really need to take care of it, um, one way or another, you're the, you're the registered owner of the property.
I understand, the question is about the, I asked him to have it done la- be, last Friday, so I can come in to show it's done, but this is what happened.
No, I, I get it, and I.
So the question, if I can get like another day to, just to get myself around, if.
I, I'd be willing to say, if it could be done by Friday.
Friday, I would say it's like the, not, not to, to wait to Friday, Friday to be the, like, on, if it's, if it's not done tomorrow, I have Tuesday, Thursday to do it.
Right.
So Friday, you see it's done, not Friday, I'm coming.
Because, right, so here's what's going to happen, uh, if, if it's not done by end of business or before it's dark on Thursday, on Friday, the inspector will go out, if it's not cut, then we're going to call in a landscaper to cut it, and then the charge will be directly to you.
Okay.
So, you know, I would implore you to, to, to reach out to your tenant, you know, and make sure that, you know, I, I don't know the, the arrangements you have with him, uh, with who's supposed to do it and why they're supposed to do it, maybe there's a rent consideration, I don't know, it's not my business, but, but certainly, he should be made aware that you're going to be paying a, a fee to have this done if he doesn't take care of it. So let's say we, we say end of business or end of, you know, dark Friday, Thursday, does that work for you?
Yes.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on.
Before, before you leave, remember, the board should also be aware that you not only charge for cutting the grass, you can charge administrative fees on top of that. Um, and so I would caution that whoever is in front of you asking for relief, that you remind them that it's not just the cost of the village cutting the grass, it's administrative fees on top of that and perhaps other fees. So, it's really important that, you know, as a landlord, either you make sure it's done, or, a- and, you know, and add it to the rent, whatever you have to do, or make sure that your, your tenant.
Just, just let me just take a look at something, just a moment. Failure to request. Okay. So failure to, uh, excuse me, self constitute permission for the village to remedy the violation and acceptance of such cost to remedy as a charge and assessment against the property. It probably should be a little more, uh, robust.
Well, the, there, the law states that administrative fees can be, you know, so.
I'm just saying with this gentleman, do you have the violation as well, what is that?
No, this is the, this violation.
This is the voter's question, all right.
Yeah, it's within the local law, so if the board wishes to instruct the building inspector, also quote those provisions.
That should be added to that, if you would. Just add to this, recommend to the building department that going forward, every violation that's issued should include the language, sentence of two, or whatever it is that refers to the cost additional to the actual work.
In the local law.
Administrative fees.
Whatever that is, that sentence can, just have him there that, into this document. Thank you, Mr. Fogel.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Kimmy, let the clerk, uh, let the, the building department know, right?
And that they're just going to add that they can make some additional.
And then on Friday, they're going to go out and re-inspect.
How quickly can you have the property cut if it isn't cut on Friday? Because it's now, it's now this hot.
Yeah, they'll be in there within a day or two.
Going to violate the Nord's ordinance in a little while.
But it's not very steep.
Okay, so, next order of business, authorization. Uh, for the transfer of the Monroe Commons property. Um, just everybody knows that this is a, a project that's up on Monroe Common Street. If anybody, has, has the board been given any documentation on this?
They were given whatever I was giving, and I gave two-two, and they all have it in there.
Okay.
The, the H studies.
Yeah. Does everybody have some familiarity with it?
Now, is, is Joan, Joan and Mendelbaum selling this property? Or is he moving it to another LLC, or what is his plans?
What is it currently?
It's the senior housing, affordable housing, yeah.
Monroe Commons, that's the senior housing, the thirty-five units on North Main Street.
Okay. You'll backwards.
Is it on North Main, is it senior housing?
Yep.
A new place?
No, 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 up here on North Main.
Oh, I thought.
Left-hand side, it's called Monroe Commons, you've seen it.
Right, so that's.
You'll be going there in a couple of years.
So, well, I guess.
Who you?
So they're looking to transfer this, the pilot, because there's a payment in lieu of taxes on that property. Um. Do we know who's buying it?
No, no. You counsel?
Does it make a difference?
I was looking at my notes, um. So I'm just going to read you an update that I sent. I've reviewed the private housing finance law and spoken with Mr. Mendelbaum's attorney. Mr. Mendelbaum is looking to transfer ownership of Monroe Commons to a new entity and to extend pilot agreement for the full fifty-year term of the regulatory agreement he has with, with the state, which is another twenty-five years on top of what he has with you guys. In order to do that, he must have the consent of the village mayor, uh, and the state. The feds are also involved, so his proc- his process will take another sixteen to ninety days, this was in December of twenty-twenty-one, to get all of the necessary approvals in place. The local pilot is just one of them. He doesn't know much about the group buying the property, it is an LLC. He is unable or unwilling to name the person behind it, I think I talked to him after that, and in fact, um, I was told it was a group that buys, an out-of-state group that buys properties like this and manages them. So Mr. Mendelbaum apparently has only this one here, and he wants to transfer it to a company that has many and, in, in the region and want, and, and he believes would be a better person to service it. Um, in any event, his intent is to continue the operating, operating the property as it has been operating. Again, he has a, basically a contract with the state, so if he gets, if he, as long as he's reimbursed by the state, he has very strict guidelines that he must follow. The new owner would be required to form a particular type of housing development funding company under Article, uh, eleven of the P- PHFL, or forfeit to the state and the fed funding, at least as my quick review said, I reviewed the law. Um, all right, so, um, that is a synopsis of what this gentleman wants to do. And I believe Mr. Mayor, he also was willing to increase his tax payment by like five dollars per apartment. See if I have anything.
That pilot was for twenty-five years?
I think it was twenty-five.
Yeah, um, let's just see.
That was what, late nineties?
It says effective January ninety-nine, ninety-nine, so that's tw- twenty-three years.
Is he selling all of his properties, or just, or just this one?
I think so.
So under Article one twenty-five of the law, the pilot is limited to twenty-five years, but it can be extended by another twenty-five years. There really aren't much differences between one, one, you know, governing statute and the next.
Now, there is some discretion on the amount of reimbursement toward the taxes, so in year one, he's, he pays no tax, right? Year two, he pays, and it escalates, whatever. Um, we have very similar situation with Crystal Run, who's also getting, getting close to, I think, full assessment. Um, so.
Let, let me, let me forward this other email to the board. Rather than trying to read through it. I mean, can you get it by four or two, now?
Uh, is it lengthy? No.
No.
I would just send it to the clerk and she'll print it. I don't think we can get it on our tablets, can we?
Yeah.
They'll email it on their tablets.
Okay, there you go, so they can get it, so email it to the board.
Very long.
Yeah, it's somewhere.
So, and Elisa said that there, he's willing to pay five dollars more per month in taxes? Into the twenty-one hundred dollars a year?
How many units are up there?
Thirty-five.
The, yeah, so.
Five units in there.
Yeah, so that's a hundred and sixty-five dollars a year more.
Let me just see if that's.
Per unit.
So I think it's five, isn't it?
Okay, so I suggested that the village may want to increase the amount of money paid under five.
Five dollars, I thought you said five dollars.
Jonah is well, is okay with that, he did the same thing in Walkeville, increased the pilot by two or five dollars per unit per year, he would go to five.
Per year, yeah.
But any increase over that might affect the affordability of the units. He can only charge so much for these units.
Right, to stay within the federal guideline.
Yeah, so.
He gets a boatload of federal tax credits to even build this to begin with, and once it gets to the end, he could actually wind up going to a full market, if he chose to.
Well, he would, well, he has a contract with the state, so he would forfeit.
For twenty-five years or for fifty?
Um. All right, the state regulatory agreement, okay, this pilot will, will expire in twenty-five or twenty-six, it, it's.
I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, the, the date it started is a little fuzzy, because it's when it was constructed.
Sure.
The state regulatory agreement was recorded in two thousand and two and has a term of something like fifty years, when the project is put into service, okay? Jonah wants the pilot and regulatory agreement to be co-terminous, so he wants to extend the pilot with the village to be the same amount as the pilot for the, the, the contract he has with the state. Okay, so this will probably allow him to sell it for more money. Because the new owner won't have to come back and negotiate with you guys. Um. So you'll see the rest of my email there, it's, it's somewhat complicated. I don't really practice this kind of law, I called the Baum counsel, they don't either, so it's kind of very esoteric. I don't really practice this kind of law. I called the bond council, they don't either, so it's kind of very esoteric. So did everyone get my email?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, you'll read through that, um, based on what Mr. Mendelbaum and his attorney told me.
Now, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, on that pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, they have, they have an agreement with the village.
Yep.
Now, each and every taxing entity, they have to go separately, the school district, fire district.
Um, I, I don't know about that. I don't know if I even researched that question. Let me also send you the original email from his attorney.
Now, if we decide to do nothing, or, or deny the request, then what happens?
He can't transfer the property, as far as I'm concerned.
He can transfer it, but the pilot won't, won't run.
Right.
The pilot won't.
Yeah, we can come with that, just so we're clear.
And it doesn't become, and it doesn't, it doesn't become affordable anymore.
That's right.
Yep. No, I, I get it. I get it.
I mean, I guess the question before the board, and really the mayor, because it is the mayor's decision, so he's seeking advice from his board. Um, you know, how important is this affordable housing to the, to the?
Well, I think, aren't we under some kind of regulation, have certain amount of affordable housing?
Well, that's a whole nother discussion, but it's, it's, um.
We'll just go towards that?
Yeah, of course. Rocketwood, yes.
Wood, so. And they're offering two to five dollars per unit. Thirty-five units, you said, Joan?
Yeah, it's thirty-five units up there. Oh, I thought when you, you initially said it was five dollars per unit per month, but it's just, just.
Oh, no, it's per year.
Per year, so it's just.
How many units are there, thirty?
Thirty-five, thirty-five. It, it's not a huge amount of housing. But again, it's affordable housing, it's what it's there for.
He, his, the rent he charges is controlled, you know. Um, I have marked up the pilot, um, in case the, the mayor decides to go forward with this, and I would begin, you know, negotiations just on the amount.
Now, the ma- at least the mayor can do that without board action?
Because he's the chief fiscal, chief fiscal officer for the, for the village. I think however, obviously, he wants the board's input.
Well, he's coun- he's asking for counsel, but that's about it, yeah. But it's his.
It, it ultimately, it's his decision under the law, as I believe.
So we're always just blink.
Let's, let's just get it right. That's the main thing.
Yeah. Well, a- again, if it, if it helps the village by giving us a certain amount of affordable housing, um, and I'm sure there's more affordable housing we have to add to the village at some point.
Well, there's a lot of things that gotta eventually come out, when, you know, you got attorneys staring at you, breathing down you, you know. The Fair Housing Act in nineteen sixty-eight, Title Eight comes to mind. Um, you know, where everybody's entitled to fair, fair housing. That seems to be an issue in my book. So. But, I mean, again, we need the housing there, I just, like I said, just the what-ifs, but, um.
Doesn't seem to be a lot of what-ifs. Not really.
That's a half acre lot, that's a half acre lot, that they allowed him to build those thirty-five units on one ha- one half acre.
Yeah.
Wow, that's what I was wondering.
At the time, it was one of, Ben Ostra always pointed that out, it's one of the highest density piece of properties in Orange County, was Monroe Commons. They're, and they're, they're not big, they're all small units, they, you know, I think they kind of have like common.
Yeah, they got a couple of things.
Common areas.
I deliver, uh, food in there, uh, to a couple seniors, and it's very small.
Well, it's your call, man.
Yeah, I, I, let's just get it done, you'll would.
Alright, so then.
But ask him for ten dollars, if that pisses him off.
Well, then it raises the rates a little too much for the renters, right?
I can do that. I mean, certainly I can negotiate and say, well, the mayor wants ten dollars.
No, all in all, I mean.
I, I just don't know that ten dollars, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Makes no difference, makes no difference.
Well, I mean, our.
I just wish I had more information.
Our police department is in there a lot.
Oh, really?
Yes. Yeah, with lockouts, medical calls, um, they're, they're up there quite a bit. Fire department wants a while, somebody's.
It gives us affordable housing in the valley.
North Main Street. Most of the A O H building?
Yeah.
And I'm sure you have to add affordable housing additional to what's there. Let, let's change the.
You'll backwards.
It's one management company as opposed to another management. That, that's all I see, that's, you know, it's not gonna make or break us for five dollars, ten dollars.
Everybody's nosy in there.
Thirty-five dollars.
Doesn't it matter, thirty-five?
Everybody's nosy, everybody knows everybody's business in there. If you park your car there, it becomes a.
My biggest fear with them? Still a Jonah Mendelbaum?
And all people got nothing to do.
Um, you know, he's a businessman, so when he's transferring something like this, you, you have to make sure you're on the same page. I just wanna make sure the president.
We say it has to say, so it has to say senior housing?
Well, it's, it's, well, I don't know if it's senior, it's low income. And, and it's, 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 um.
All that, yeah.
It's governed by a state contract that's in place for another twenty-five years.
I thought it was low-income senior housing, which is low income.
I don't think it's senior.
I don't think it is.
I thought it was.
I always noticed senior housing.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's who rents it to, you know.
That's what I wanna find out, because that, because low income could be totally different than low income and senior.
Oh, absolutely.
I think that's age, I, I'm pretty sure that's age restricted.
That's what I thought.
Well, look, it, it may be. I just had no indication of that.
So I've been hesitant to call him. Should I, should I call him and just, just kind of get these questions out and be done with it?
Why don't we just, why don't you say you're, well, let's just have one fine, I mean.
When's the next meeting?
On the twenty-first, right, two weeks from now, so is that the twenty-first, fourteen days?
Yeah.
Go.
Yep. I mean, is there, if you wanna have one more call, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just do that, just table this, and then we do one more call. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
The date for that next table's meeting for the planning board?
It's the twenty-first.
Oh, for the tables, that table of the planning board, the meeting for the board room.
Oh, the twenty-first, the next meeting, twenty-first of July?
June.
June.
Okay, next order of business, authorization to purchase, uh, uh, service, Andy, uh, trustee Ferraro.
And a motion by me, oh, no, I'm sorry, resolved, the board of trustees authorizes Mayor Dwyer to sign an agreement for the purchase of servers for the Village Hall from New Windsor I T, town of New Windsor, five, five-five Union Avenue, New Windsor, New York, in the amount of five thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents off New York State contract pricing. This cost will be split between the budget line F eight thir- eight-three-one-zero-point-two-two-zero, administrative office equipment, and budget line A one-six-two-zero-point-two-two-zero, Village Hall office equipment.
Put that in form of a motion?
I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second?
Berenger will second.
Any discussion? For the question?
Berenger, I.
Ferraro, I.
Carl, I.
O'Connor, I.
Bye, right, so carry, thank you, Andy. Next order of business, trustee Carl, water plant?
Yeah, I received a call, I was on a call with, uh, our water plant operator, Ernie Maybe, this morning, regarding a flange that's, uh, cracked and leaking on the raw water intake coming into the filtration plant. Uh, went over a couple of options with him this morning. Um, resolve, the board of trustees approves a repair of a water leak within the plant on a twelve-inch raw water line that supplies the filters, Tam Enterprises, one-one-four Hartley Road, Goshen, New York, one oh nine two four, quoted an amount of seven thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars being allocated from budget line F eighty-three thirty-point-four-five-three-zero, which is a purification equipment maintenance, and I will put that in a form of a motion.
I got a second?
O'Connor will second.
Discussion?
Yeah, um, we're going to do this, uh, at night, on a weeknight, um, after hours, when, when our demand, um, dies down a little bit, we'll make sure the water storage tanks are filled, because we have to shut the plant down in order to do this.
And I think the other thing too would be, uh, you tell me if I'm wrong here, uh, the price would require us to go out to procurement, but given its emergency nature, uh, right?
Well, seventy-eight hundred dollars, um.
I'm not so sure.
I think that would be two written quotes. Um, this is a specialized thing. Tam, Tam has come in in the past for us.
Yeah, I, I think the big thing, I just wanted to make the public aware that we spent the money, and, uh, that, uh, it is emergency repairs. Uh, I think once we gave, did he say when he would give us the green light to do it, uh?
Um, hoping next week.
Okay.
Um, hoping to get, he's gotta get the parts, so, he's gotta get the spool piece and the, uh, unit of flanges.
Alright, so just for the, just for the reflection, the minutes that, emergency repair, uh, and, uh, and seventy-eight, seventy-six. Okay? Uh, you put that in form of a motion, right?
Yes.
You seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you vote, yes?
Nope.
Let's vote, please.
Berenger, I.
Ferraro, I.
Carl, I.
O'Connor, I.
Bye, right, so carry, thank you. Uh, real quick, uh, for me, uh, just wanted to let the public know that the Memorial Day Parade was, uh, just a really great event on a really great day, it was beautiful out, and, um, you know, we had some more participation in terms of marches. Um, so I'm very proud of this village for doing the great job that they've done. Our P D, our fire department, joint fire district was just great. And our ambulance corps, all volunteer organizations, uh, always do a great job, and I just wanna thank them again as well. And, um, our scouts, uh, our A O H came in and marched this year, it was really cool. So it was just a great event, so I just want the public to know that. Um, anything else for the public?
Yeah, we have a couple of things coming up. Um, this weekend, we have the bike rodeo on Saturday from nine to twelve. And then we have Monroe's Got Talent Saturday night, I wanna say it's at seven, I'm, yeah, trying to find the flyer.
Yeah, seven and nine.
Yeah, I've been talking with Pete Dawson, um, I've gotten him a couple of additional sponsors. Um, the only thing, I, it may rain Saturday, so I, I, I know we don't have a rain date on this.
I think it's the next day.
She's had the next day. Yeah, it's the next day. It's at least in the past, it's always been the next day.
Should say the next day.
It's the next day.
Alright, just says show day, I don't see anything with rain date on here.
Is there a, a couple of versions of that, John, just show that?
This is the one I have.
Well, hopefully it'll change, maybe it'll change by Saturday.
Yeah, well, we just gotta be prepared.
I've confirmed with him that there is a rain date, but everything, the contract had a rain date, and I, well, I'm not sure that America, that the Monroe's Got Talent had a specific contract though. Let me double check with him.
Okay.
Cause I, I just shot him a text a little while ago, I haven't heard back from him, so.
Yeah, and I know he did a nice job with those, uh, the banner that mentions everything. Where are we looking? Saturday.
I think some of his advertising has it. Okay. Okay.
Um, whatever.
And you good?
Good. Um, I, I've sent the board and the attorney some pictures, uh. I met with the administrative sergeant, Young, yesterday, and, uh, six, six neighbors in the Windgate Woods Development, um, regarding park school buses that are, um, parking in, uh, areas on, on turns. Um, sight distance issues now coming out of Southern Drive onto Pierce Hall, where the bus that parks there quite often. Um, down, school buses, down on Half Hollow Turn, I think it's thirty s- thirty, uh, three or thirty-five. Um, the gentleman was parking a school bus in his driveway, and it was blocking the sidewalk. Um, it was on a Friday, and, um, I advised my neighbor to call the, the police department, they went over there. So the gentleman took the bus out of his driveway and parked it in the street. It was there Friday night, Saturday night, and about two o'clock, um, two A M Sunday morning, the bus come roaring up through the development. Um, again, um, I, I think you, you've seen the videos I've sent you, with the little children, it, it's, um, we, we've gotta do something, especially with these sight distance. Tim, uh, off, Sergeant Young also, um, says it, it's definitely an issue, and that, you know, the village needs to, needs to get some legislation together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order to, um, try to correct this problem, but as far as, you know, where they can and can't park, or not park at all. But, um, it's, 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 it's becoming, it's becoming serious to the point, they're parking overnight now, these school buses, so, um, we could, uh, certainly look into that. Um, I know Sergeant Young was gonna reach out to the, um, the bus companies to let them know of the videos, you know, the write-on reds, and the parking in the streets, to see if, um, they can resolve it on their own. If not, then, um, so my neighbor, as I told him, I'd bring it to the board's attention tonight, which I am. And, um, I'll wait to hear from Sergeant Young or, or Chief Guzman, to see what, what the, the next step would have to be, but, um.
Well, at least, I have a question, I think I spoke to Neil about this. You're given a ticket, and at least they could be given a ticket, in lieu of being arrested, basically. That's what I, I was always under the understanding, that that ticket was in lieu of being arrested, because you broke the law, but it was a minor infraction, so you promised to show up and pay for this. That is or isn't true?
It's not in lieu of being arrested, so if you, if you're ticketed for a parking violation, um, you, you get a court date, and you, you either pay it, or you get a court date, and then you pay it, so.
Can the vehicle be towed away, since it's maybe parked illegally?
I think you can tow it away only if it is blocking, or, um, parked in an area that's noticed for tow away. So I would have to look more closely at your vehicle and traffic law again, to see what the remedies are for, um, not parking. So, I mean, what did, what would the police, what did the police say about this?
Well, according to Sergeant Young, they park that, but right the way it is right now, it's legal.
Because it's?
It's a motor vehicle, it's a registered vehicle, it's parked in the street, it's legal.
Okay.
Um, so, he said that the village would have to do the legislation where there's no commercial vehicles, you know, whatever, how, however.
Well, yeah, Friday to Sunday seems excessive, there's no like lot, it can be.
No, no commercial vehicles on the road.
But we have, and he was gonna wait for the chief to get back, watch the flag there, you almost.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, what I'm saying is, right, I mean, a Friday to a Sunday, isn't there a garage or a depot or somewhere where it would be parked?
I guarantee, I go home tonight, there'll be two buses parked on the street in my development. They come home, they sleep for a couple of hours, and then the buses are going again. These are regular school buses.
So they're not taking people to school?
I don't know what they're doing. I don't know, I, I know what they're doing.
Are you like partying?
But the thing, uh, it's, uh, you know, Sergeant Young had said that, you know, especially with the sight distance issues, that's, the village could look at legislative part, you know, parking, you know, in certain areas, so that you have clear view, when you come to an intersection, you're not looking at the back of the school bus, you're able to look down around, almost around the turn. So that's stuff that can be addressed, but he was gonna wait for the chief to get back, and they were gonna go over, and the chief's well aware of what's going on as well. Um, but it's just, it's becoming a safety concern with the amount of children, and they just, they, they run out, they run right out in front of the school bus, and, you know, it's, it's, it's very, very nerve-wracking. And, uh, uh, you know, the older people that came to my house last night, they're afraid to drive. They, they won't, they won't drive at dark, because they're afraid with the amount of children, and they just, there's really no supervision, and they're, they're in the streets.
Yeah, I think, um, let's wait and see what the chief has to say, modifications must be made to prohibit all commercial vehicles, including buses, of a certain size to be parked on the street, uh, that can certainly be done.
So, like I say, uh, you know, Sergeant was gonna wait for him to get back and discuss the conversation we had yesterday with, with, uh, the six of us, so. Um, the other thing, uh, what, we have any status with the Lake Street, um, update on the, on the paving job that was done there, and?
So, yeah, um, they've made a recommendation. So, yeah, um, they've made a recommendation, the, the contractor, he wants to mill out the road to the crown, so he wants to mill out, say, two inches at each curve on both sides, and he wants to angle that up until he gets to zero at the crown. He wants to fill a void in the middle, and then he wants to lay over the whole entire thing with two-inch top, seven ephedins. Um, I told, uh, we, we had special counsel involved, and, uh, Mr. McPherson recommended that the, uh, contract, the engineering firm, Creighton Manning, uh, actually design the remediation of that street, and then give it to Arginio to comply to, if they agree to, if they don't, then we'll, then we'll either litigate or we'll call the bond. So, uh, that's where we're at right now, um.
Right, if we can, there's a handicap sign, you know, we, you've, we've had the discussion, there's a handicap sign right in front of the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
Can we get that covered for now? At least have it covered.
In front of the fire hydrant?
It's in front of the fire hydrant.
Yeah.
And handicap, and they're par, you know, it, but there's no painted parking spot there, but there's a handicap spot there, and it's right by the hydrant. If we can at least get that covered for now, because that, um, uh, again, the dumpster over here is still on the sidewalk. Alright, we talked about the dead trees in the park. Um, well, just, uh, for the board's info, the pine tree tank on Winchester was power washed today, uh, cleaned up, we're just waiting for the tank mixer to go in that, um, so the water department's getting, getting stuff done, we are, we are on the reservoir, Alan Prince is up there with the older unit, and he's in the coves cutting all the heavy lily pads and whatever chestnuts were trapped into them, he's pulling all of that stuff out now, so, um, so that, that's pretty, that's pretty it for me.
Marty, anything you're in?
Nothing. Oh, excuse me, mind if I, sorry, I realized I had this in my card, and my firm had asked me to bring it up, and I look like an idiot if I didn't.
Is that the FOIA?
That was the one from, no, no, this is just, uh, well, I think the letter they had submitted before, um, I just wanna confirm, was the public hearing continued for next, for the next one?
Yes.
Okay, great, awesome, thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, public hearing on the same thing for Jordy was next month, Ed?
No, this, same month, next, next meeting.
Next week.
Two weeks from tonight.
Twenty-first.
Yes.
I'm the planning board, and that's where the.
No, 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 no.
Here. Us.
Get the planning board. This meeting, the meeting that you attended tonight?
Yeah.
You come back in two weeks to the day, and we'll have this again.
Oh, okay.
But you bring the chips and, and, and the trail.
To the same subjects?
Yes.
That's what tabled means then, right?
Yeah, it means we're not gonna take any action on it tonight, we're gonna table it until the next event.
The planning board tabled it, not him.
No, if it's the planning board, it's gonna do it.
There's no planning board here.
We got additional information from the planning board tonight that we're, we've got a review.
Right, so we. So, we tabled it.
That's it. Okay.
Public comment, or?
Okay, yeah, anybody from the public, uh, who'd like to speak, you're welcome to do that.
No.
I'm your attorney.
That's your attorney.
One of them.
Okay. Okay, uh, there's nobody from the public wishing to speak, I need a motion to go into Attorney Client for purposes personnel.
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call a question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye. O'Connor, aye.
By rights, so carry, thank you, good night, Sharon.
Um, I really don't wanna leave you, can you just make a comment, cause I'm doing freelancing for the photo news now?
Okay.
I'm taking pictures and I'm gonna put something in the paper.
Okay.
I work with Jessica, and Jessica and I work together, I take pictures.
Can you ask her, should I ask the editor?
You know Jessica, right?
I don't, is she the new editor?
Oh, no, no, that's, uh, Jean Straps.
No. Jessica's who?
Jessica.
Oh, the sales, is that the salesperson?
No, she's a, she's an adversary, I think.
She's an adversary, Jessica's. I just was curious, if you could just do me a favor, ask Jessica, I was quoted in the, uh, the Monroe's Got Talent, the first document, there's a quote from me in it, and it was taken out, I was just curious why, she was given copy.